Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call this Fairfield County Council meeting on Monday, April the fourteenth to order. And at this time, we will stand and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we will have the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to amend the agenda to add the following language to item nine A. First reading by title only, ordinance number eight forty-three, an ordinance of the county council for Fairfield County authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of, fee in lieu of, ad valorem taxes, an incentive agreement by and between Fairfield County, South Carolina, and Project Mega Cable to provide for payment of a fee in lieu of taxes, authorizing certain infrastructure credits and other related matters, and to move item nine C until after item seventeen, executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, it's nay. That direct show seven zero.
Any other motion?
Any other? Any other motion? Do it now.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to amend ordinance number eight forty-two by substituting the ordinance approved by council at second reading to the ordinance presented to council at third reading that changes the name of the...
I believe that is, I think the motion as it relates to number eight forty-two is going to be made after executive session.
That's what I also thought.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear.
I just wanted to clarify that.
I think, I think now it would be appropriate for a motion to approve the agenda as amended to allow for the items that are forward.
I agree.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposeds? The direct show seven zero. And now, we will have our invocation by councilman Orrin Guest.
Let us pray. Most gracious and everlasting Father, Father, I thank you once again for this beautiful day we have today, Father, a day we'll never see again. Father, thank you for the health and strength that you give us to make it through each and every day. Father, bless those that are here and bless the ones that want to be here, Father. Father, I want you to bless this meeting, Father, that we do everything in pleasing and willing in your name in this meeting. These and all other blessings, we ask in your name. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Now, we have the approval of the minutes. A regular meeting from three, twenty-four, twenty-five. Is there a motion? Motion and second and discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposeds, nay. Okay, the direct show seven zero. Now, we're down to public presentation. Item A, audit presentation. Carpenter?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, we have tonight with us Mr. Grant Davis from our auditing firm to present the county's two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four audit. Mr. Davis?
Oh. There he's on now. Can you hear me better now? Okay. Well, again, thank you for having me here to go over the results of our fiscal year twenty-four audit of the county. Again, my name is Grant Davis. I'm a partner with Malden Jenkins out of Columbia, South Carolina, and we've conducted this audit. And you should have, or you should have received at least at some point, two ultimate documents in connection with, with our audit. One is the, the thick annual financial report, which is just the audited financial statements in our report thereon. The, the second document is about a thirty-page document. It's, we call it our auditor's discussion and analysis document. And just briefly, the, the purpose of that document is really to provide communications to you all that we are required to communicate. And those are things that I'll go through kind of as we go through their, through this brief presentation. But there's some additional information in there, some, some charts that you can look at in terms of the general funds revenues and expenses, how that's changed over the past several years. Anyway, just trying to be helpful in providing you with some, some high-level analysis of the county's finances. And then there's a look toward new accounting standards and their, their potential impact to the county in future years. So that's the, the purpose really of those two documents. But I typically prefer to page numbers in the financial statements as I do these presentations. I'm going to do that now. So if you have that, the annual financial report in front of you, the first thing I'll refer you to is our opinion on the financial statements. It's just after the table of contents on page number one. This report goes on for about three pages, but ultimately, the, the first page there includes our opinion, and it is an unmodified opinion on the county's financial statements for fiscal year twenty-four. And that's, you know, you may have heard me say this in the past, but unmodified is really not glamorous language, but it's really the only acceptable result in a financial statement audit. So it's a clean opinion that we have rendered on the county's financial statements. As we go through this, you ultimately see that we've got three reports in this document. This is the first of three, and I'll get to the others kind of as we go as they're at the, the back of the document. But just after our opinion, you'll find management's discussion and analysis. Begins on page five. It goes on for eight or nine pages. And I always direct folks to read that portion of the document. Certainly, our opinion is important, but this management's discussion and analysis has been written by management, and it's, it is what it sounds like. I mean, it's there to explain why did revenues increase, or why did expenditures increase, so forth and so on, by each of the county's major operating funds. I just direct your attention to that section and encourage you to read that as a part of the overall document. Just after that management's discussion and analysis section, you get into what we call the basic financial statements. And there's a lot of information here, but typically, the general fund is of primary interest. And page fourteen shows the balance sheet of the general fund and other what we call major funds. These are just major operating funds. They're major from a quantitative perspective, whether it's based on the assets or liabilities or revenues, expenses, they calculate as such. But again, the general fund, just a few highlights to note, general fund had total assets at the end of fiscal year twenty-four, so at June thirty, twenty twenty-four, of about twenty million dollars. And that's made up of several items, cash and cash equivalents of about seven point eight million dollars, and then some receivables from both other funds within the county and then outside parties totaling about ten point, ten point eight million dollars. So that's the bulk of your assets. Liability is about two million dollars. That's owed to parties outside Fairfield County and some within the county in terms of balances due to and from other funds. This gives you fund balance again at June thirty, twenty-four of about seventeen and a half million dollars. That's an increase of one point four million dollars from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. So an increase in the general fund's fund balance. I always just want to point out that the unassigned portion of fund balance, you can see if you're looking with me on page fourteen, fund balance is broken up into a variety of different categories. And unassigned is basically fund balance is available for appropriation. And if you take your expenditures on page sixteen, the general fund spent about thirteen, or excuse me, thirty-five point seven million dollars throughout fiscal year twenty-four. If you just take that number and divide it by twelve and then apply that to your fund balance, that gives you about five and a half months of fund balance on hand, unassigned, excuse me, unassigned fund balance on hand at the end of fiscal year twenty-four, five and a half months of total fund balance. And the reason I think that's important to note is you have a hard, you'll have a hard time getting a hard and fast recommendation about what the right amount of fund balance is. That's often a question I get is do we have too much? Do we not have enough? And of course, I can't answer that question for you. But most recommendations that you will find is that you have somewhere in excess of three months of fund balance. Y'all are sitting at about five and a half. So again, I think that's a very healthy place to be. And the reason I say that, if you consider what your largest individual revenue source is being property taxes, those monies come in at the very, basically the very beginning of the calendar year. And of course, your year end is June thirty, right in the middle of the calendar year. So you've got a big revenue that comes in or at the beginning of the year, and your expenses are really pretty level if you take out capital spending, the things that are not normal. But just your normal operating spending in the general fund is pretty level, month after month after month. So to be at June, you really need to be able to make it all the way back around to the beginning of the year where your property taxes come back in because they're, again, the largest revenue source. So again, that's why I mentioned five and a half months, I think is a really healthy place to be. And, and what we're saying here is that if the county didn't take in another dollar past June thirtieth, that it could operate at the level it did in fiscal year twenty-four, no, without any problem for five and a half months. So that's sort of where I'm getting to that recommendation. But again, that's just the general fund. Page sixteen, I alluded to briefly earlier, but this is the income statement for the general fund and the other funds, thirty, thirty-eight point nine million dollars in total revenues. And again, the largest individual line is property taxes at about twenty-nine million versus expenditures of about thirty-five point seven million. And then there are what we call other financing sources and uses, and these are just moving monies between funds, issuance of debt, sale of assets, things of that nature. The result is again, an increase in the fund balance of the general fund of about one point four million dollars. As you go through the rest of the document, there are really pages and pages and pages of footnote disclosures. Those have not changed really in terms of their format. Certainly, the content has changed within, but I don't think there's anything of particular note for the purposes of this presentation to go through. I will highlight the, the general fund's budget on page sixty-six, if you're following along. General fund budgeted just under thirty-nine million dollars in revenues and collected just under thirty-nine million dollars in revenues. So a variance between, in terms of revenues, a variance between actual and final budgeted amounts of about eighteen thousand dollars, so pretty spot on in terms of revenues. Expenditures budgeted at thirty-six and a half million, actually spent thirty-five point seven million. So about a little less than nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars of spending less than was budgeted. So both on the revenue side and the expenditure side, you have positive variances in terms of collecting more than you anticipated and spending less than you anticipated in the budget. So again, I think very positive things to note there. I mentioned at the very beginning that we had issued three reports within this document, and the second of the three is the next thing I'll mention to you. It begins on page ninety-six in the document. We call this report our yellow book report. It's a report on internal controls and compliance with laws, regulations, grant agreements, so forth and so on. And this, this report is not designed to offer an opinion, but to provide what we call negative assurance, which is to say, as a part of planning and conducting our audit, and of course, with government auditing standards, if we identify any instances of noncompliance or any internal control deficiencies that are material to the financial statements, we are required to report that to you all. We did not note any instances of noncompliance, which is obviously positive. We did note one deficiency in internal controls, which I'll go over in just a, just a moment here in the, in the subsequent pages. But again, this report is not designed to offer an opinion. The third and final report that we've issued is on page ninety-eight, and this is a single audit report. So this is a federal compliance report. Anytime you receive and ultimately expend in excess of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a, in a fiscal year from federal sources, that triggers a compliance audit. We, the, the county expended, let's see, I think it was about three, three million dollars, three point seven million dollars in federal monies from a variety of programs, the largest two of which were the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds program and then the airport improvement program. This opinion on compliance is another clean opinion, so an unmodified opinion on compliance. We audited both the coronavirus program and the AIP program and noted no instances of noncompliance, no internal control deficiencies relative to those programs. The last thing I'll note, all of this is sort of summarized on page one hundred and one within the document. And I mentioned a moment ago, we did identify one internal control deficiency, and the details of that are on page one hundred and two and one hundred and three. Really, a repeat finding from fiscal year twenty-three. You'll note that if you compare the two, the verbiage is very much the same. I think the only difference is the dollar amount. And this basically, the title is called financial closeout and reporting, and this really just speaks to the, the volume of adjusting that has to happen between when the county provides us information to begin our audit and when we can complete it. In fiscal year twenty-three, we had adjustments totaling twenty-eight point seven million dollars across five funds for fiscal year twenty-four. This year, we had about ten and a half million dollars in adjustments. So I, I mean, I think you can safely say a significant improvement in terms of the dollar amount of things to be adjusted, but still ten and a half million dollars across, I believe it was eight funds is the nature of that, that finding. But otherwise, I, I mentioned in our auditor's discussion and analysis document, there are a few things that I'm required to report to you all. And again, those are memorialized within that document. But a few things to note, we're independent with respect to the county. We didn't have any disagreements with the county. In conducting the audit, we received representations as to the accuracy and completeness of the information that we provided in order to conduct the audit. We didn't have any past adjustments, which is to say that we didn't identify something that needed to be adjusted that was wrong and pass on doing that from a materiality perspective. Those are the main ones. Otherwise, like I said, there, the, the rest are communicated within this, within this document. Nothing, nothing of note, at least to me. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, if you may have any relative to the report or our auditor's discussion and analysis.
Any question? Yeah, Mr. Corvall?
Just a quick question. Thank you for that. Appreciate that, Mr. Davis. Did you have any insights or comments about our debt situation? You mentioned our assets. What about liabilities? And how are we doing with our debt situation?
Debt? Let's see, I can refer you to a page number, and we can talk about it briefly. Page number forty-four is a summary of what we call long-term obligations, and that includes what you would think of as traditional debt, so in the form of bonded indebtedness, the general obligation bonds, revenue bonds, which I believe are installment purchase revenue bonds, and then some others. Your pension liabilities included in, in that number. So you'll see the subtotal for fiscal year twenty-four is about seventy million dollars in what we call these long-term obligations. But again, the largest individual line is the pension obligation, which is administered by the state of South Carolina, really not in the form of, I, I think what you're, what you're talking about. The other is the total of other post-employment benefits liability at about sixteen and a half million. That, that is retiree health insurance is basically. Those, those two line items are pension-related liabilities that are quantified on an annual basis. But just in terms of bond indebtedness, four million dollars in general obligation bonds, and then about sixteen point seven million dollars in revenue bonds. I don't know exactly what the, the county's legal debt limit is off the top of my head. I mean, it's eight percent of your property tax assessed values. I would say that you're well within that from a constitut, you know, state constitutional perspective and certainly have some borrowing capacity. But I don't look at this and say this, you know, the county's got an excessive amount of debt, certainly.
Anyone?
Mr. Chairman, thank you for being here tonight. I know several things play into getting the audit ready from our side and your side. I got a question for you. How much would the county treasurer's office play into getting the audit ready?
The, the county treasurer's office is, is important to the process, and I, the, the main reason that is, is that just about every dollar that comes into the county comes through that office. And of course, certainly from other perspectives too, from the school district, from municipalities, to a lesser extent than the county certainly. But, you know, a, a great deal of cash receding and cash dispersing activity happens and goes through that office. So it is certainly an important piece to the, to the audit process. Yes, sir.
Mr.? Yeah, thank you too for being here. And it seems to me like, and we've finally, now we've had interim administrators, and we're, we're hoping to get the budget on time. I know we talked about that, and now we have a permanent administrator, and hopefully some of these issues in the past have been hopefully resolved, you know, in, with our administration and with our staff. And so, do you foresee us, and, and I guess, Mr. Carpenter too as well, us being able to in this next year being really on time? What do you think?
Well, it's funny, the reason I laugh is because I know exactly what Mr. Carpenter thinks about this. He and I met, I don't know, maybe a week or two after you started in my office, and we talked about the, the process. And, you know, this is not something, in terms of timeliness, this is really not something that's specific, specific to Fairfield County. Fairfield County is really not an outlier in the state in terms of audit timeliness. And in fact, I had, I was on a panel for the South Carolina Association of Counties a couple of months ago, and that was one of our topics to talk about. Why is this seeming to happen at a more frequent pace? And what I always tell folks is, you know, the, the information that we're auditing needs to be ready, which basically says it needs to be available to be audited, and it needs to be right, you know. And I think a lot, a lot has happened since twenty twenty and the COVID period in terms of staff turnover, not just here, but really across the state and, and across the country to some extent, in terms of staff turnover and the complexity with which government entities have to report from a financial perspective. The GASB is our standard-setting body for governments. It sets gap for governments, and they have been extremely active over the last, really twenty years, but especially the last five or six with new things to report and keep up with. And so that has certainly, certainly been a challenge. But to answer your question, I, I think Mr. Carpenter is aware of the challenges and is devoted to doing whatever he can to, to make it happen. Of course, we are certainly too.
At the end, I'm sorry, at the end of the day, who is responsible for getting the books balanced, the reports together, and sent to you? Is that the finance department?
If I may, Mr. I am. The buck stops here.
All right.
Period.
Who gets them to you?
The, the entire team. So some of that, a lot of that comes from finance, some would come from treasure, some would come from other entities that we have involvement with. So it's not just one moving piece. It's several moving pieces have to get them into them on time. But again, at the end of the day, the buck stops with me.
But there's no one specific thing that makes them late?
We're still, I'm still, to some degree, trying to understand some of the aspects of why we've been late in the past. So I can't really comment fully on that yet. I'm learning. As, as Mr. Davis said, we started almost my first week looking into this to, to ensure that, that anything that is an obstacle to us from being on time this year is removed. year is removed.
And I'll, I'll just add too, just briefly, I know this is sort of unsolicited, but the, this, this fiscal year twenty-four was the tenth consecutive year that the county's audit report has been dated after December thirty-first. So this has been a decade sort of in the making. And I, I think that's important to keep in mind, that this isn't necessarily just a new issue to, to tackle. And of course, the, the state of South Carolina has wavered at least to some extent on the extension process that they, that they allow for county governments in terms of whether you can even get one or not. They've waffled on that to, and I know that frustrated a lot of people. They have re-implemented. I think this is the second or third consecutive year that they have allowed for a three-month extension. And that is, that, that, that process is really for, you know, things that, you know, a lot of the state was impacted significantly by the hurricane in the fall. I mean, that, that you have situations like that, you have personnel turnover that, you know, in key positions, that's what that's for. But I think when you see an audit, the audit's late for ten consecutive years, that, that, that's not just a number. I mean, that would have to be a real perfect storm of events, you know, to go on over and over and over again for that long. So anyway.
Anyone else?
One more thing. I just wanted to thank Mr. Carpenter. I don't mean to, because you just got here, so this is, no means any of your fault, but I appreciate you working hard and we got it done, and it, and it looks good. And so I just look forward to, as you got a lot of irons in the fire, a lot of a learning curve and all of that. So we just look forward to in the coming years, it getting better, and I, I'm sure it will, but thank you.
Mr. Davis, we'd like, thank you for giving us that report. Thank you for the good news. Appreciate your service.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, if I may just interrupt briefly. That is good news, because, you know, the key points out of that is our fund balance went up fairly well. We came in under budget on expenses, over budget on revenues, and we significantly cut the findings from where they had been. So even though we got a long way to go, and I'm not declaring victory by any stretch, that is a good report. And I just wanted to, to stress that. Thank you.
Definitely a good report. Thank you. Now we're down to public hearing, item A. Public, I apologize.
Item seven. Robert.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of council, John A. Jones.
I have one thing that is, it's like, it's not a recommendation as much as it is an ask. I'm asking if this is feasible and if it can be done. And what that is, is having a town council meeting every quarter. We had one Saturday in District Four. It was awesome. It was awesome. Get your representatives to do that in each one of your districts. I have no problem driving to the other districts to go to a town council meeting. It was exactly what we needed. We need to be introduced to the new administrator. He got up, he spoke for about twenty, twenty-five minutes. It was perfect. Had four council members there. All the people that were in that area, in that, you know, forum basically, came out of their seats when the whole thing was over with, and they engaged all four of the council members, asking them questions, you know, saying this is, you know, something that I was looking at, maybe you should look at it in the council, if not, no, well, okay, but these are, these are my feelings. It was perfect. Ms. Roberts brought chocolate chip cookies. What more could you ask? I mean, it was, it was awesome. That is something that probably does need to be addressed and thought about, because the response from the people in District Four and a few from the outline areas came into that meeting, and it was wonderful. It was wonderful. Now, the other thing is you've got some of these ordinances that come in first reading only. Okay, all right, I get it. And that's what's posted. Now, in the past, I've tried to dig up the information necessary for each one of those ordinances that are listed as first reading only, and it's going through a labyrinth in the county computers. It's ridiculous. The average person is not going to do that. They're not. It's, it's, it's too complicated. If it's worth putting down as the first meeting, where you're going to get your two weeks, put down what it is. You know, you have to know. Elsewise, you wouldn't put it down as a first reading of any sort of. A second reading, all right, you got all the meat and potatoes in there. But the thing is, you've lost two weeks to do your research and present it to county council of what your concerns are. That's not right. If you're going to put it down, and you're going to put all the signature blocks, put down what it is. And again, think about having those meetings, because it was, it was awesome. Thank you.
Eddie Branham.
All I got to say is it takes a good man to realize that he made a mistake, and it takes a better man to correct that mistake. Thank you.
Clifton R. Hendricks.
To honorable council members, Mr. Carpenter, thank you for allowing me to address council. My name is Clifton Hendricks. I'm eighty-four years old. I'm a U.S. Navy veteran, eight years. I worked at a chemical industry for thirty-one years and eight months. I drove to Calhoun County forty-seven miles every day for thirty-one point eight years. After that, I worked in the nuclear industry outages for fifteen years. I'm one of seven children, four girls and three boys. I've learned a lot, I've seen a lot, been called a lot of things, but through it all, God has allowed me to persevere. My council member, District Three, has been told that she is not qualified to serve on one of the committees. I have an issue with that. If our people in District Three voted for her to represent us in our District Three, I think if she is weak, that means all of council is weak. Council is only as strong as its weakest member. And my prayer is that if something is wrong in an executive session with you all, that need to be addressed. And don't ever look down on a person if you are, be willing to help them come up if that is the standard. And if Councilor Chair speaks, that means he's speaking for the whole council. Think about that. We are having a meeting at our church on March, May the first, that's on a Thursday, at six-thirty, for our District Three and District Two, for people to come out and express concerns and issues. And it's my prayer that if you all have time, to please come and just listen. You don't have to say anything. Thank you so much.
Tangi Bryce Jacobs.
Good evening, council members. I stand again before you with signed petitions and support from concerned citizens and registered voters. Some of them are here today. The comment by the chair, Mr. Gilbert, that his decision stands.
Uh, Ms. Bryce, you can't use name.
Okay. The decision to, that was, I heard here, that the decision made by the chair would Now, as I said before, this is undemocratic treatment of our elected representative, Peggy Swerengen. It is an insult to any voter anywhere. Many of us have fought long and hard for our voting rights, and many still are fighting. And it is the comment that one man's decision is the ultimate action that takes our voting voice away. It is shameful and insulting to those of us that still believe in democracy. I hand you petitions from people in District Three and up for your documents. Thank you very much.
Brandon S. Henderson.
Please hold the applause.
Good evening, council, Mr. Chair. I'm back again, a continuance from last week and also pretty much a continuance from what Ms. Tangi just spoke upon. I write the vote. That's the only thing that levels the playing field for all of us. That's the only thing that, that ensures proper representation, and we are lacking that drastically in District Three right now. I was, to the point where it's affecting the whole county really, because a side note, I'm still trying to figure out on the March twenty-fourth agenda, how we had so many non-action s. No old business, no new business, no nothing. I looked at the surrounding counties, Union, York, Newberry, Richland, Lancaster, Kershaw. None of those counties had none of their agendas for anything. So I'm just trying to figure out what's unique about Fairfield County to where we could have so many non-action items on the agenda. But I will bring up an old business item that's personal to me, and that's the resolution that I asked for March of last year in reference to my feasibility study for municipal corporation in the Buckhead area. I knew last year was an election year, didn't want to affect that, everybody was in campaign mode, so I stayed pretty quiet on it. I stayed in contact with my council member about it, who gave me instructions to contact the county attorney. But we still need to have some discussions about that, and I don't know what the exact next steps would be for that, but I'm in need of that resolution, because last year I was about ninety percent complete. This year, I would say about ninety-seven percent complete. And I would like to proceed forward with it. I have full support of everybody in the county that, on that side of the county that I meet. And it all stems back to voting, seeing your vote in action, something actually happening. I've been talking about this for a long time, and people know how serious I am about it. And also, the community wants it. We want it. Everybody wants it. We feel like we need it, we deserve it. So with that being said, if you find time to put that on your agenda sometime soon, I'd like to, for that to be brought up for rediscussion, a resolution to be passed that services provided by the county will maintain in place as we proceed with our feasibility study and post incorporation. Everything should stay in place as is. And if you need my phone number or anything afterwards, let me know, I can give it to you. But that's all I have right now. Full support for District Three, councilwoman, we need her on the committee. Oh, and also, if this requires that special committee that's in the rules that you're talking about, where it's, the chairmanship will rotate, maybe that's the solution for it, we can get our district member as the chairman or, or, or the, or the chair of that committee, I should say. And because we have some action going on in District Three where she may be busier than all of you. Thank you.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Now we're down to public hearing, item A.
An ordinance to consider the request to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance Number 599 and the related zoning map to provide for the rezoning classification from RD1 rural residential district to B2 general business district, tax map number zero-two-five dash zero-four dash zero-one dash zero-two-five dash zero-zero-zero, located at one-seventy-eight Wildwood Road, Great Falls, South Carolina, two-nine-zero-five-five, owned by Hewan and Shannon Lyles. Note the Fairfield County Planning, Planning Commission approved this rezone request. No one signed up to speak, Mr. Chair? An ordinance of the county council for Fairfield County Council authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes and incentive agreement by and between Fairfield County, South Carolina, and Project Red to provide for payment of a fee in lieu of taxes, authorizing certain infrastructure credits, authorizing the execution and delivery of a purchase and sale agreement by and between Fairfield County and Project Red and other related matters.
We open it up for discussion at six-thirty-nine. Does anyone sign?
No one signed up to speak, Mr. Chair?
Okay. We close that at six-thirty-nine. Now we're down to ordinance resolution and order. Item A for first reading only, by title only.
An ordinance of the county council for Fairfield County authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes and incentive agreement by and between Fairfield County, South Carolina, and Project Mega Cable to provide for payment of a fee in lieu of taxes, authorizing certain infrastructure credits and other related matters.
This is title only. Can I get a motion?
Yes.
Motion in second, in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Opposing? The director show seven-zero. Item B, third and final reading ordinance of eight forty-two. Forty-one.
An ordinance to consider the request to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance Number 599 and the related zoning map to provide for the rezoning classification from RD1 rural residential district to B2 general business district, tax map number zero-two-five dash zero-four dash zero-one dash zero-two-five dash zero-zero-zero, located at one-seventy-eight Wildwood Road, Great Falls, South Carolina, two-nine-zero-five-five, owned by Hewan and Shannon Lyles. Note the Fairfield County Planning Commission approved this rezone request.
You heard, there's a motion. Motion in second, in discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter or either Mr. Morgan, any kind of information or details on the surrounding area and why we're going from residential to general business district?
Yes, sir, Mr. Paulie. So this is a commercial property historically and traditionally. It has been, I believe, in auto repair for a number of years. However, it, it closed down, and there's a twelve-month window when that happens, you have to come back and get reapproval. There's a, currently a B2 about two-hundred feet away that's also operating. So this is very consistent with the neighborhood. Traditionally, it has been a B2. It just has, it was grandfathered, it, it closed down, so they've come back and they have to get permission. It did pass Planning Commission's seven-note. Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposing? The director show seven-zero. Item C is for our, after our executive session. Item ten, board and commission minutes, none. Eleven, a board and commission appointments. We would go down each. Item A, planning commission, Mr. Michael Watts. Item A, planning commission, Mr. Michael Watson, District Two. Is there a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Let the record show seven zero. Board of Zoning Appeal, Mr. Randy Kelly, District Two. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Seven zero. Board of Zoning Appeal, Ms. Joey... Joel Smith?
Second.
Okay. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Seven zero. Planning Commission, Mrs. Judy Brennale, District Four?
Second.
Okay. Any question? All in favor? Opposed? Let the record show seven zero. Planning Commission, Mr. Christopher Pullins, District Six?
Second.
Questions? All in favor? Opposed? Let the record show seven zero. Disability and Special Need, Dr. Craig Stuck, District Six? Any questions? All in favor? Let the record show seven zero. Now we're down to Item 12, Old Business Accommodation and Hospitality Tax Committee Recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, the county's accommodation tax... A tax committee met. They had in front of them several items for consideration. That night, they approved the following as recommendations to the county council. The first, they recommended the Chamber of Commerce for $65,052. They recommended then as wealth to the South Carolina Railroad Museum, a total of $60,000. They recommended to the Wings and Wheels Air Festival, $5,000. They recommended the Pine Tree Playhouse, $20,000. And they recommended for the Alston Trailhead of the Palmetto Trail, $47,500, which was half of the request that was done. There were several that did not get recommended to the council. So this comes to the council in the form of a recommendation for the council's approval, which would then be included in the budget for a 25... 25, 26 budget.
Can I get a motion?
Second.
Okay. Any question?
Go by. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Overall, I feel like I don't have enough information to make an informed vote on this situation for a couple of reasons. First of all, this is hospitality and a count... Hospitality and accommodations tax is specified by two different sections in the state law, and I think there are slightly different rules on how the money is supposed to be allocated in certain situations. So not aware of how much money we have in total collected in these two areas and how much of this... So Mr. Carpenter mentioned the amount that's been recommended for approval. It totals $197,562. And so that's almost $200,000 we're being asked to vote on, which is a fair amount of money. And I don't know that we... I don't know if that's everything that we have collected to this point. And if so, if not, you know, what percentage of what we've collected is that? How much is left to dish out? So I just feel like there's more information that's needed for me to vote on this with an informed decision. And the other issue, which is also... Well, possible issue is the alleged conflict of interest during the voting on the chamber money. And allegedly, the chairwoman did not recuse herself officially and still kind of voted by raising her hand. Now, I wasn't at the meeting. I don't know. But it's an issue that was raised that I think we should talk about. When we have... When one of us on council has a conflict or potential conflict, we are asked to physically leave the room, and that did not happen in this case. And I think that's... I looked for the charter for this Accommodation and Hospitality Tax Committee or Commission, but I didn't see a charter with the rules that they operate by. But I think it would behoove us to make sure that any of our commissions or committees with their... When there is a potential for conflict of interest... And this is one commission where I think there probably will be more options or opportunities for a conflict of interest, just because of the makeup of the commission and what they're voting on, that we should put some guidelines in there that says that they should be physically away from the room if there is a person with a conflict of interest. Bottom line is, I don't feel like I'm prepared to vote on this issue.
Any other discussion? Yeah, Mr. Williams?
Well, I just... I feel like we appointed these and we dragged this out a long time in selecting these people to be on this committee. And I... To me, it's that I believe we need to trust the committee that we picked. I mean, we dragged this out for quite some time before we finalized that. And so I'm in favor of supporting the committee. We spent so long seeking out to a point. So I'm for moving forward with it.
I must agree with Don that Roberts rose of order was not followed, and I think that we may need to revisit this. I agree with him. I'm not sure that this is... Was handled the way it should have been handled for a county meeting. I'm not sure. I tend to think that we need to revisit this.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor? Let the record show five-two.
Mr. Chair.
Did we have to... Yes, yes, sir.
You know, my understanding on that, if I could comment on that, that vote issue was that even though, you know, the committees probably are not aware of all the, you know, that they're... Whether or not they're supposed to recuse themselves or remove themselves all and in recu... But my understanding that one vote did not... Was not counted. And so I, you know, I'm just... I understand... I understand what they're talking about, that we need to be, you know, aware of those things. But I don't think that affected the decision made. But, okay.
Thank you. We have a five-two vote. Next we have is New Business Animal Control Vehicle Action Item. Mr. Carpenter?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, in our Animal Control Department, a vehicle was totaled some months back. We received a check from our insurance company for $24,364 for the cost of it. To replace it will cost us $25,790. That is just over the threshold that I have authority to act upon. So I bring to you the difference, which is approximately $1,400 we have found within that department's budget. It does not affect their bottom line nor the county's bottom line. So we seek approval from the council to authorize the expenditure of the $25,790 and to enable them to purchase this replacement vehicle.
Okay, you've heard the administrators' report on that. Is there any... Given your vote? Okay. Motion in second and discussion. All in favor? Next is the Sheriff Office Vehicle.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, one of the joys of being new to an organization sometimes is you're learning the right paths to walk down. So I put this on the budget... I'm sorry. I put this on the agenda of the full council for discussion by mistake. This is an item which should go before the Finance Committee of the council first. The reality of it is, is that the sheriff's office is seeking six replacement vehicles midterm. They've had a number of problems come up. I believe it is an issue that can be addressed, but it would require some discussion. So I would request that the council consider moving this to a committee meeting of the Finance Committee where we can have more detailed discussions of this.
You've heard Mr. Carpenter's request. Is there a motion?
Mr. Carpenter, I would agree that we need to move it. I make a motion to move it to a committee. I would like to see it probably come up in the next budget session because even with going to a committee, you're having to amend the budget to get this done, and we're only months away from establishing a new budget. But I would be in favor in the meantime to make a motion to move this to a Finance Committee.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Got to get a second. Okay. Okay. Motion in second. Comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree that this should go to the Administration and Finance Committee. However, if the need is urgent, which I have been told it is, I would not want to wait until July 1st to allow the funding to be released. If Mr. Carpenter can find funding in the current budget to provide at least some relief to our sheriff's office, I think that would be very prudent. So, thank you.
Okay. The motion to go to the Finance Committee. All in favor? Opposed? Let the record show seven zero. Now we're down to Item 14, the county administrator's report. Mr. Carpenter?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, as I have been speaking around the county and listening, I've heard several things, one of which has come up frequently, which is discussion regarding the county's legal fees. And I felt it was important to address that maybe in some more detail to explain what really goes into coming up with a legal line item in the county budget. First of all, the way Fairfield manages its budget is we put all legal fees for every aspect of the county into a single line item. So that is across the board, every constitutional officer, every department, every possible legal outcome is in it. So that will automatically inflate that for maybe other counties where the sheriff's has got a legal line item, community development has a line item, Parks and Rec. They all have their own line items for legal. So that's the first, I think, important thing that we need to do. The second thing is that within that line item, we have a number of different law firms that we actually work with. So it is not the county attorney's office, so to speak, the firm that we've engaged, which is Smith Robinson, that is responsible for that line item. We currently work with seven different legal firms across the board. Those legal firms have specialized expertise in areas that one generalized law firm, of which Smith Robinson is a general constitutional and governmental law firm, would not have the necessary expertise to represent us well when going in front of court with trained attorneys against us, going perhaps as far as circuit court, appeals courts, or even the Supreme Court. So those can be HR, human resources. Those can be in issues of land and litigation regarding land. Those can be in areas that would be economic development, things that are very specialized and required a nuanced knowledge that is just not going to be found in a generalized law firm. But when we do deal with Smith Robinson, they have 19 attorneys within that firm. Any of those 19 attorneys could and in some cases do work on issues related to Fairfield County. So it is not a single person who is representing the county. It is a number of attorneys that do that. So when all is said and done, those line items go, it is a very broad brush that is painted when we came up with that. We also, last year's legal fees were up significantly in great part because of everything involved with the Joint Water and Sewer Commission and the various hurdles we had to go through, which resulted in greater than normal legal expenditures, which resulted therefore in the current budget rising to reflect the potential for more there. So we have to include what could happen. And therefore, that $425,000 was based on a variety of things that happened in the past that might happen this year. Obviously, a budget you're planning, you get generally 18 months in advance, so you're doing your best to read that crystal ball when you put it together. So it resulted in a line item that did jump up from the previous year, but that was why it jumped up, to reflect what could happen. And then the reality of it is that after nine months at the end of March, our current total is $163,000. So we spent year-to-date $163,000 across seven different legal firms representing over 20 different county departments. Now, there will still be three more months. Bills will still come in, so that's not the final bill. But I think that, God willing, and nothing significant happens, we will be well, well under budget. But again, I thought it was important to clarify for our public and our citizens that when you see a line item like that, that is not one person. That is a variety of people, a variety of firms, and a variety of potential outcomes, which could include everything from having the attorneys represent us to paying settlements if we have to make a settlement for some kind of a disposition. So I wanted to address that to the council and also to our public in general. Thank you.
Appreciate you for that report.
Yes, sir.
B Budget.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Working with our finance department, coming up with a budget schedule, it's, as you know, in South Carolina, Constitution says the administrator shall prepare a budget. And so after the audit got in, that became job number one, is getting that budget prepared so it can be presented to the county council. We also, as you know, have to have a budget authorized and approved by June 30th prior to the July 1st start of the new fiscal year. So we have a hard and fast date of June 30th that we will have a budget presented to the council. I'm going to be proposing some very modest changes to the calendar, and I'll put this out. And the beauty of a calendar such as this is the dates can be adjusted if we need to move it up a day or back a day. But I'm looking for a work session with the council sometime around April 30th and May 7th. And those two work sessions would include our general budget and capital, as well as elected officials and outside agencies to present and interact with the county council. I would look for a first reading on May 12th. After that, if we need to have a work session, we'll have one the 21st. May 26th would be second reading. And second reading is really where all the meat starts getting fleshed out. If we need a work session, we've got several weeks between then, but a June 9th, third reading. So that allows us some ability and some flexibility. But it is my intention to have to you a budget that will be able to be passed and approved by this council on June 9th.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Item 15, Clerk of Council Report, none. Item 16, Council...
I'd like to thank the people of District Four. Just talking about the meeting, we did have a nice meeting, and I enjoyed everybody out there, and I think we did come to some kind of conclusion about things, and I think you'll be seeing a lot more meetings. So thank you for letting me attend.
Go by. Mr. Chairman, thank you. Also, thank everyone who spoke today. And as far as a town hall for District Two and District Three, I will tell you that Ms. Swerengen and I are working together to actually conduct one because our districts kind of overlap as far as east and west. So we're looking to have one out in the western part of our districts near Ms. Swerengen's home base and one over towards probably... I'm looking at the Midford Rec Center for one over on our side on the east side of District Two. So we're looking to combine those. We're working on dates with Mr. Carpenter so that we can all be available and be there, but that will definitely be happening. And as far as having one every quarter, I would... When I recall the forum that we had for the new council candidates back in, I don't know, September, October, whenever it was, and the first question that was asked was, would you support having town halls? And every one of us said yes. So I will commit to do that, and as Mr. Carpenter's time is available, you know, we will definitely be doing that. The only other thing I'd like to say is, last Saturday, April 12th, was the Eighth Annual Yard Sale and Bake Sale that supported Emergency Medical Fund for the animal shelter. And I want to thank the 32 volunteers who started at 6:00 a.m. to set up, worked through the sale, and then closed things down by 4:00 p.m. And over $6,000 was raised as part of that effort for the animal shelter for emergency medical care. So thank you all very much for that. Well done.
Anyone else?
Yes. Thank you all for your comments this evening. We appreciate them, and we'll take them to heart. The comments that were made about District Three and District Four, your representative is cognizant of those issues that you discussed, so take heart into what will come from those comments. Secondly, the town hall meeting was a success. I'm happy that District Four and some of the others, as well as my fellow colleagues up here, gained a lot of information from Mr. Carpenter, some information that we didn't even know ourselves. But it was a learning experience, and if we are... And if we are to get better and become more efficient and more confident in what we're doing up here, we have to have training of some sort. And I'm a big proponent of training. If I don't know, I don't know. And I will say that. But your attendance at the town hall meeting last week, last Thursday, Thursday evening, was a great success. So pass it around. I don't know about what the other council members think about a quarterly town hall meeting, but expect more from District Four. I want to share what I know with you so that you will be involved. Because after all, it is all of us, not just council, it is all of us, the residents, citizens of Fairfield County, who are going to make the difference. So thank you very much for your comments.
Yes, I would like to thank everyone that came out, spoke, and support. Also, Mr. Hendricks said that we were having our town hall meeting at his church, Guess Seminole, on May one, and that will kind of be, we've kind of got to get that, be sure that Mr. Carpenter can come and dawn for those people that might, like he said, our districts overlap, so, but it will be May the first at six thirty, if it works out with everybody's itinerary. And also, on the seventeenth, out front, the sheriff's department, I do believe, is having an Easter egg hunt, correct me if I'm wrong, from five to seven, with hot dogs, and I think they're going to be looking for the golden egg. I don't know if it's the goose that laid the golden egg or what, but all are invited for that, the egg hunt. Thank you.
Anyone else? Now, we're down to executive session.
Seventeen A, receipt of legal advice and discussion of potential legal claim involving Fairfield County in matters covered by the attorney-client privilege pursuant to South Carolina Code thirty-four-seven-A two. Seventeen B, discussion of matters related to the proposed location, expansion, or the provision of services encouraging location or expansion of industries known as Project Mega Cable and Project Red in the area served by Fairfield County pursuant to South Carolina Code thirty-four-seven-A five.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Opposing? We are now in the executive session.
Hello, hello. Okay.
About they didn't pose a problem with it. That's how we do it. You need a steady or a lean. Right. Very good. I'm sure I made a mistake. I'm getting there. Don't you like anything better than anything plain and ordinary? Like seeing you in the hey, I see you. Yeah, well, we do have some more ducks. Ducks all of a sudden are high. See, that one is the best.
Hello, hello. Okay.
Can I get a motion to come out of this next session? The motion second and the question. All in favor say aye. Now we will have item nine. Let's see here. Nine C.
Third and final reading ordinance number eight forty-two. An ordinance of the county council for Fairfield County authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes and incentive agreement by and between Fairfield County, South Carolina and Project Red to provide for payment of a fee in lieu of taxes, authorizing certain infrastructure credits, authorizing the execution and delivery of a purchase and sale agreement by and between Fairfield County and Project Red and other related matters.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make a motion to amend ordinance number eight forty-two by substituting the ordinance approved by council at second reading to the ordinance presented to council at third reading that changes the name of the economic development project from Project Red to Bomag Americas Inc. and FIAT Distribution Center LLC and approve the same language changes to the FLO agreement and land purchase agreement.
Okay, we have motion in second. And discussion?
We'd like to ask Ms. Braward if she would come forward and explain.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Project Red is the establishment of a new copper wire manufacturing. Oh. Okay. All right, the project red is a three-phase expansion by an existing county manufacturer, which results in three phases project. First, the construction of a new distribution facility. Second, the expansion of their production lines. And third, state-of-the-art customer training facility. It will happen at parcel seven in Fairfield Commerce Center, represents a capital investment of thirteen point seven million jobs, I mean, million investment and seventy-five new jobs within three years with an average wage of thirty-one dollars per hour. The county has offered a thirty-year fee in lieu of tax agreement with fixed millage rate, one percent multi-county park, fifty percent special source revenue credit over a ten-year period, and the special source revenue credit for that same amount of time. The cost-benefit analysis done on the project shows that for the investment, thirteen point seven, again, one million of which would be in machining equipment and twelve point seven in the land and building, would result in an estimated annual payroll at the facility of four point eight million, four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars and three hundred. The economic benefit over fifteen-year period is ninety-eight million, two hundred and eighty-six thousand, five hundred and thirty-one. Net public revenue would be seven hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-six. So the return on investment cumulative over that same period of time, fifteen years, the total economic development benefit would be twenty-six dollars and sixty-three cents. And the public revenue would be, for every dollar that they invest, one dollar and nineteen cents. That was pretty much it.
Any question from Ms. Braward? Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposes? The主席 show seven zero. Thank you, Ms. Braward.
Thank you, Ms. Braward.
Hallelujah.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposes? The主席 show seven zero. This meeting is adjourned.